All right. Call to order, the June 4th meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We're, just so everybody knows, we're going to be jumping around a little bit in the agenda today, so it's not going to necessarily go in order. So, let me just take a look at my agenda. So, the executive session is actually going to go last, and once we go into executive session, we will not come back into open session. So, that'll, but that'll be after we do everything else on our agenda. So, that's going last. We're going to start with the special town meeting zoning by law amendment articles. So, we'll start with Articles 1, 2, and 3, and then I think we'll talk about the planning board report, Articles 4 and 5. So, right now, we're talking about special town meeting zoning by law amendment articles, 1, 2, and 3. These have to do with 1600 Osgood involving a change to building height under Table 2 in the I-2 zoning district, some clarifications regarding definitions of solar energy, and a special permitting process to allow changes to setbacks for solar. Attorney Smolak.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, John Smolak, attorney for Hillwood Enterprises. With you this evening is Sean O'Brien, Vice President of Development for the Atlanta office of Hillwood Enterprises. Also with us is Nate Kirschner, who's the Senior Project Manager for Lang and Engineering and Environmental, here to answer any technical questions of concern that we have here.
At this moment, we have not made any additional changes to the articles, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, at this point, these are, have been proposed as planning board articles. Our intention is to take a vote tonight about whether we recommend favorable action on these articles. So, why don't we start by, if there's any members of the board that have any questions or comments or things they'd like to discuss, we'll start there. I don't have any. I think I'm all set. Anybody? Okay. So, we're good. So, we'll go, I don't have any questions for you, John, or for the applicant. I think everything has been pretty fully vetted. So, we'll go to, if there are any members of the public that have any comments or questions, I take, we take those now? None? Okay. Great. So, why don't we vote? Let's do, any objection to voting on these together?
Yeah. Well, let's do each one separately.
Okay. Each separate.
I make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve 4 to 0. Favorable action.
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 2.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. And recommend favorable action on Article 3.
I'll second.
We'll give Lori the second there.
Okay.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Okay. So, we will continue the public hearing until June 14th to, or June 18th? June 18th, the day of the special town meeting. We'll have a meeting shortly before the actual special town meeting. The reason we keep it open, even though we've made our recommendation, is just in case new information comes in, in case anything changes technical, in case anybody wants to submit anything, so that it's part of the record, so we can consider it. You can do so. The articles themselves will be as printed currently right now, but we can consider future changes either at that meeting or at the special town meeting. But, as I said, I think these have been pretty thoroughly vetted. We've been given all the information that we've asked for, and feel that these are good zoning by law changes for this property.
Do you want to begin that meeting at 6:30?
6:30 sounds good.
Enough time.
Yes. So, that meeting will be at 6:30. So, these are all continued until 6:30 on June 18th. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that we had two public information sessions that were held last Wednesday and this past Sunday at the VFW. We had about, I'd say between 60 and 70 people attend each one, and I think they went very well. A lot of questions that we would have anticipated in terms of really site plan-related issues, traffic, noise, potential air quality impacts, things of that nature. But I think all in all, it went very well. So, just wanted to let you know.
Fantastic. And we will, as these are now planning board-sponsored and planning board-recommended, obviously, the planning board will make a part of a presentation as to this. I anticipate that we'll ask you to also make a presentation at town meeting and answer questions as appropriate, because I'm sure there will still be some discussion, but it's come a long way in a short period. So, done a good job, and our staff has done a great job. So, we appreciate that. Okay? Great.
Right.
June 18th.
Thank you very much.
All right. I feel like that'll be, that was like the easiest part of the night. See what happens next. Annual Town Meeting warrant, Article 4, approve borrowing to extend sewer line on Osgood Street. So, this relates to the project at 1600. It's not a zoning change, so it's not something that we're sponsoring. It's a bill sponsored, an article sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. So, I guess we get to weigh in on favorable or non-favorable action. Seems to me from a, if we're looking at it solely from a planning board perspective, adding more people to the town sewers, as long as we can accommodate it, which I don't have any doubt that we can, seems like a good planning decision. So, from a planning board perspective, it seems like it's a pretty easy one to vote or approve along. But I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, comments?
I'm curious about the extent of work that would occur with this $7 million. That's a lot of money. And some word that there would be no effects to the current, yeah, the current capacity of the system, that the capacity of the system could handle this additional. But like you said, it's not really a planning board issue here, so.
Yeah. I mean, technically, I think we've, we actually have right to the responsibility to opine on certain set of capital things. It's kind of weird, because I agree with you.
Water lines do fall under the charter where it's an environmental impact, and therefore the planning board does weigh in, and that's why it's in your planning board report. Again, not zoning, so it's just a recommendation.
I mean, I think, I think we would all agree that probably extending the sewer line is a good thing. I mean, divorced from the money, it's, the concept's a good idea.
Right.
You know, the money part inevitably comes up. Is it worth it? Who's going to pay? That sort of thing. I don't know if that's really within our remit.
Right. So, I agree. So, I mean, it still could be something that individually, we may not agree with the price, or, I mean, from what I've heard, you know, with the town a third, and the state maybe putting in some, and the developer putting in some, it seems reasonable. But I agree. That's, I'm not really thinking about that. I'm just thinking of it from a planning perspective.
I'm thinking about where's, where is the scope of work? Where's that?
Right.
Where are we building this? I know it's from 1600 Osgood, but to where?
To Sutton Street intersection.
And how? How many, how many businesses, homes, or?
Will connect to it. I don't know the number, but Princeton Properties tied in at a connection near Beijing, but it actually pumps to Ray's Pump Station out on Great Pond Road, and then back to Sutton Street. The Butcher Boy Plaza does as well, and so.
This seems to me, I think, Terrence comments, maybe we should get somebody from the DPW. I think it'd be worth it anyway, because we haven't done that, but I think it does make a difference, because maybe we'll see something that somebody else doesn't see about how we connect the pieces. I don't know. I mean, is there a firm plan for this, or is it still a work?
The DPW did a study, so they did hire a consultant who did a feasibility study and a cost estimate. John, you might be able to speak to who that was, but that was done a couple of years ago, and so these estimates are fairly recent.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, just speaking to what Jeanette indicated, the town actually had a consulting engineer perform an analysis of the sewer capacity, and an alternative's analysis, actually is back in January of this year, updated some information that had previously been done with the Princeton Properties project. And the determination was that the sewer line extension, extending roughly from Bradford Street, Osgood Street intersection, up to Sutton Street was the best alternative. And actually, the town has examined this probably over the past 15 or 20 years in various iterations, had applied to the state for the revolving funds to fund that sewer. And now we have an anchor to do that. And as is indicated in the article as well, there's a commitment of a third of that cost by the town, a third, subject to town meeting approval, obviously, but also a commitment from Hillwood Enterprises to pay for a third of that, and then a, an agreement to cooperate with the town in Hillwood to file Masworks application with the state for the remaining funding. And so, again, it's, not only benefits 1600 Osgood Street, it also benefits all of the users along that line, and that's a good question in terms of how many users are there. But my understanding is that, you know, if some of the users that are currently on the system are tying into a system that's closer, as opposed to having it pumped down to Ray's Pond, and then pumped back up, 133 back up to the intersection of 133 and 125, this might be a better alternative from a, from an engineering standpoint. And from an economic development standpoint, we've been looking at trying to tie in properties most, you know, I guess most probably the properties across from 1600 Osgood Street for some time, because they lack an ability to tie into sewer. And so, they're all on septic systems, so it's an opportunity to tie those in, properties in as well. So, so the evaluation has been done, and, you know, as part of a Masworks grant application, the further engineering would be done as well to finalize it. But my understanding is that the line would run within the right-of-way of Route 125. That's the most logical route, and.
And where does it begin at? Or does it end Sutton Street?
Yeah, roughly, yeah, roughly at, yeah, Sutton Street, and then roughly ends at the intersection of Bradford Street and Osgood Street. So, so the, yeah, so there's a dollar figure there, and it's probably from a environmental impact. I think there's only a few areas that might be in the buffer zone along that whole system. So, it's probably the most effective route for the town as well, so.
Is there a cost to the homeowners tying in along? So, I had a conversation with the head of the community today, and she does not foresee betterment charges to put people to connect.
There may be a sewer connection fee, perhaps, which is a small amount. But other than that, I think it's, obviously, a sewer connection's a lot cheaper than repairing your septic system. So, so I think it's, all in all, a better result from an environmental perspective as well.
You guys prepared to vote on it? And we could wait till the next meeting. I'm just not sure what other information we can get.
Last night, they did not vote any favorable or unfavorable on Articles 1, 2, and 3, because they wanted you to weigh in first, but they did make recommendations on 4, 5, and 6, and each of those were favorable.
Since it's, since this line would go down to Bradford Street, is there, has there ever been any discussion about continuing the line up Bradford Street? That's a, there's some, there's some homes on that street as well.
They're old. I remember reviewing some of the older sewer studies, and that was a possibility, but that wasn't part of this particular scope. Maybe it could happen in the future. I would imagine it would be happening in the future, and the line would be sized to accommodate that as well. But at this time, we wouldn't include that. I would assume that would be a separate phase if the town chose to go that route. And keep in mind, the sub million is, you know, is in there simply because of the fact this is a reimbursement program with respect to Masworks as well. So, the town's not obligated to expend that entire amount, or not, they will be reimbursed for two-thirds of that funding, so.
What if you want? If you want to vote on this?
I mean, I'm okay with it. I, in the best of all worlds, I would have preferred to get a little bit of a presentation, but I don't think there's, a presentation is really going to change anything. I mean, it begins at one place, it ends at another place, and maybe there's a few twists and turns, but it's all the same thing. So, I'm ready to vote now.
So, I'll make a motion. Motion to recommend favorable action on Article 4.
So, I'll move that.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Article 5, transfer portion of 153 acres comprising Stevens Estate from general municipal land to care and custody of the Conservation Commission for open space and passive recreation. So, we're being asked to vote on Article 5. We're not being asked to vote on Article 6, which is somewhat of a companion article. But independent in its own right, that's the one that, up until yesterday, had talked about selling or leasing the Stevens Estate, or the portion that's not cut off here, the, basically, the building, giving the Board of Selectmen the power to do that. They amended that last night at their meeting to just be a lease. So, or maybe they're going to make, they're going to make that motion at town meeting. That's what their plan to do is. So, do we want to just, we can just talk about it in general?
Yeah, a little bit. I guess, I have one question. Did the drawing of the lot lines change?
Slightly.
Slightly, okay. Okay. Because that was one of the concerns that I have, that whatever got drawn there is.
What was the process in that?
We have the plan. So, we, John brought up a really good point, like when those lot lines were drawn, do we know that it's going to be a valid lot? And we had these renderings superimposed on the lot, and we did the zoning around it to make sure the setbacks were met. The frontage was appropriate. Obviously, the size of the parcel is conforming. And so, the cell tower would remain on this lot. The only thing I will say, there's a fall zone associated with the cell tower, so that may require variance, because we're now putting the lot line right around the cell tower, but obviously, it's.
Cell tower is a, but the revenue?
Right. So, they'll be in agreement, and again, elegant banquets in all their presentations has said they have no problem that there'll be easement access to it, there'll be ease in access to the trails, and the revenue would still remain with the town.
So, the, one other question that I had is, in the drawing of the carved-out lot, do any of the trails run through?
The trails today, if you zoom in on that, people call that last building there different things, but the stable, the trails, right now, they park in front of that and access the trails. So, what we've talked about is actually extending those trails around the stable to the proposed lot near the cell tower in the back there, and provide the trail parking at that lot.
Where's that?
So, at the very north part of the lot, that you see, there's a parking lot proposed. Today, the trails come right in front of the stable building, where there is a parking lot already.
Okay.
And so, we could extend those trails to that rear parking lot, and then provide parking there.
Okay.
It's similar to what we did with Edgewood when they built their memory care building. The trails got, just diverted a little bit further up a half-mile hill. So.
Okay. So, there's no real impact on?
Not on the trails. And again, it's understood that we would maintain access to those trails.
John, as I understood it, the. The conservation aspect of it was something that's been kind of talked about for a while, and is, seems to be, I mean, everyone seems to be on board with that aspect.
Yeah. I mean, I, from my perspective, I think that, you know, I'm glad that the lines got redrawn, because I think you would have more accurate lines. I do think the article that preserves most of the space is a very good idea by itself. I'm frankly not at all enamored of the other article to give the Selectmen complete discretion to sell the property, because a long-term lease is the same as a sale, sorry, it is. But I'm really concerned about that. I don't know, since we're not actually voting on that, you know, we can talk about it, not as the case may be, but I think the land that we're going to protect is important that we protect it. There is one problem, is that it may complicate the future, whoever ends up with the property, whether it's this company or somebody else. That may create a problem by separating the two, but that's something we could probably live with.
I mean, I'm in favor of Article 5. I think Article 6 has some things to work out. You know, I definitely prefer the lease to the sale. Or if you're going to have a sale, maybe have some sort of, you know, first right of refusal or something like that. But it seems to me that the managing aspect is difficult for the town, and to expect that it's going to get better is, I think, somewhat foolhardy. You know, I think it's a beautiful building, it's a great asset, but it's not used. It really isn't by the town.
No. But I mean, I think that, one of the things, I would, the towns were talking about it a long time, about whether we should run a facility like this, and it's probably not, obviously, not the sweet spot of the town. But I think that the situation is not dire. And the big concern that I have is that we've gone off, and we've done an RFP, and for whatever reason, we've got a single response. And, you know, I mean, I do a lot of RFPs for work, and the one thing you want to do in an RFP is get three, four, five viable alternatives, because you won't have pricing discovery, you won't have discovery about different alternatives and uses and so forth, and the season won, and negotiating an agreement with one party, I think, is a mistake. I think there are other alternatives. I think the most interesting alternative is the alternative of partnering up with the trustees of reservation. I think it would be spectacular. It's a little bit different type of deal, and it'd be a little bit more complicated to do. But I don't think we should rush into selling this property just right now, and that's why I have a huge problem with the article. I think it's going to have regulatory problems, because I don't think it's going to pass muster with the state with the preservation, the Mas historical, because the new addition dwarfs the size of the old building, and that's not the kind of thing they like to see. So, I think there's going to be a lot of problems with it. I think dealing with another, you know, doing more due diligence and getting more people like the trustees, I think is a better solution. But, you know, be that as it may.
So, to be dealt with, yeah. I mean, so far, those solutions don't exist, so it's always, that's always the question, right? Do we take?
No, no, but the trustees actually, like the third or fourth person at the trustees has expressed an interest. It will take some time for that, but they've, at the top levels of trustees of reservation, they are interested in this, in making this an estate, just like the other properties they have. And the big advantage of them is, if you think of all the programming that has existed Stevens Coolidge House over the last couple of years, they would bring that same type of programming here. If we sell this to a private party, we'll never get anything like that. So, you get some long-term public amenities. Think 50, 100 years down the road, would you rather partner with a banquet company? Would you rather partner with the premier land conservation entity in the whole United States? That's really what we're talking about.
We did reach out to them and informed them of the RFP on both occasions. Regardless, they did pull it, looked at it, and for whatever reason, decided not to.
I think they decided not to, because they thought it was drawn too narrowly, as they don't just run banquet facilities, they run reservations, and their scope was broader. But if, if they were looking to be a total steward of the entire property, that's what would interest them, in the same way like Castle Hill and places like that.
No, I will say, the second, our intent was to broaden it, and I think we did broaden it, but maybe not from their perspective, is how they're looking at it. However, they've shown some recent interest, I mean, within the last week, they've shown interest, so.
Okay. So, I'll see. Okay. So, seems like everyone seems to be in favor of Article 5, which is the only one who voted no. So, why don't we do that? We get a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 5?
So, vote.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good discussion. Okay.
So, with that, I'm going to print the, finalize it and print the report for town meeting.
Great. Okay. Um, where to now? Let's do, let's do 350 Great Pond Road. I usually make him wait till the last, so I'll let you, right? All right. Well, changing it up today.
Want me to open that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, back in January, the board approved basically a replanting plan for 350 Great Pond Road. Let's see.
The trees in the different areas, and then?
Yes. There was a large amount of cutting that was to take place, so replanting plan was submitted to the board. The board approved it on January 5th. Let me see the decisions. Draft decisions were sent to everyone on January 31st, and in the decision, part of the decision included a $2,000 performance guarantee bond for the project, and the applicant has requested a bond reduction.
Okay.
Or waiver.
Okay. Well.
Well, the reason I didn't, that was never mentioned in any of the meetings. It was thrown at me at the end, which, that's why I didn't understand it, you know? I don't know if that's normal. You know, okay, that's, I'm just, that's why I just, if I can get it lowered, because, like, I want to grind all the stumps. And she told me I can't. I had to pay the 2,000 for the.
So, you haven't done any, or you're ready to do the work?
I haven't done anything.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not ready to do the work yet until I move in.
Okay.
But I at least want to, at least get all the stumps grinded before I plant any trees and go through the whole, you know, plan. I just can't do anything right now, and to put up the 2, it's, that's just more money at the moment, that I can't, I got to pay the stump guy, and I have two more months to pay for the house, you know?
So, it is our normal practice, that is within the range that we normally do, might even be a little lower than normal, but it, but we can discuss. I mean, the idea is that we need some sort of guarantee that everything's going to be done.
Well, that's why I'm here. I mean, I'm going to do this the right way, that's why I haven't done a thing. I went to Monica, and I would have followed up, and anything I do there, because I know it's a crucial area, and I just.
And if things are not done properly, we have the ability to bring them back in, cease the work, right?
Yes. The purpose of the bond, of course, is to, like you said, ensure that the construction, erosion control, all the plantings, everything is done in according to the plan. And essentially, if, normally, when the bond is in place, if the applicant doesn't do that, then you use the bond money to do, you know, to do what you approved.
Anyone thoughts? I mean, my inclination would be to lower it to 1,000, something like that. I mean, I think that gives us enough, you know, after the initial cutting, which we all know is not what we like to see, it's been here multiple times, and given us, you know, come back at every stage to inform us of what's happening, and I know, been in contact with you, Monica, correct?
Yes.
So, I'd be comfortable lowering it to 1,000.
But do you have somebody lined up to grind these stumps?
Not lined up, but.
Do you have somebody lined up to do the tree planting?
I do not yet, because I don't even have anyone lined up to do my floors of my house yet, you see? But I at least want to get the yard presentable at the moment, like even my wall at the front is, needs, needs to be fixed, and that's going to cost a lot of money. But I just want to do a little prep work before I do get ready to do any type of planting after I move in.
So, next steps for the yard is what? It would be the stumps, or?
The stumps.
Not the wall, the wall's a separate thing, you said, up front?
Yeah. I mean, the wall is on my own anyhow. I mean, that, I'm past the line of whatever you guys have.
The construction of the house was something that was approved via building permit?
I'm trying to remember, trying to recollect this whole.
But where most of the stumps are, are up on a hill on the other side of my house.
Okay.
In the 250 barrier, whatever, however you guys term it. And I just want to grind them all.
So, how long is it going to take you to finish all the work?
This, according to my contractor, because I fired my old one, it took away two months. He didn't do the right thing. He said three months from now, June, July, August.
If we're just.
I'll be in that house.
So, Monica, is there any other recourse we have in this case, other than the bond money of, like, I mean?
I mean, typically, that's the process that the board follows. It's, it's, you know, the bond is there to ensure that the work is done. I don't know of any case where you come back after, and then.
That's what I, yeah.
The thing, the thing is, is that it seemed like there was a fair amount of plantings to be done, and I, 2,000, I'm sympathetic, but $2,000 wouldn't cover all those plantings anyway.
No. I agree.
But.
I mean, I understand the bond, and me trying to lower it, but, like, I'm here today because I want to do, I want to do everything according to what I'm supposed to do. I can't, I'm not going to cut corners, because I'll get in trouble.
I think I'd feel better if there were a plan of action in place.
Well, grinding would be the beginning. You know what I'm saying? See, I can't.
You're not going to do any work until?
You can't do any work until the bond's in place. You can't do any work until the bond's in place.
Plus, I can't.
The bond, the bond is in place under the section prior to any site work or, you know, site work.
So we're, we're at a status quo if the bond isn't?
Unless we move, I guess we could move when the bond is due, and that's the other thing, when he has.
But in the same instance, this is a situation where the property owner or their agent, you know, landscaper, what have you, kind of went above and beyond.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this is the watershed, this is a clear cut watershed, and you shouldn't have done it. And $2,000 bond's not very much money. I mean, I feel like we've already been sort of really reasoned.
But, no, I understand that. Listen.
I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult with you.
I know. I mean, I wish that you guys have seen the yard before, when I first bought the property, two of the biggest trees in the middle of my lot fell forward one month after I bought the land. I removed those trees. Now, I found out after, I was supposed to tell you guys, I didn't know the protocol. Now, when you go in that little area where the two trees fell, that whole area, there were at least eight dead trees. You know, they were all dying, you could just see. I mean, the yard was neglected for over 25 years. And a lot of trees I took down were angling different ways. And I have a nine-year-old daughter. What do kids do? They play in the yard. And that was the main reason why I did that. And a lot of it was storm damage, and, I mean, I could tell you the whole list, but I wasn't, and I understand what you're saying, it's the watershed. But where most of the trees are, are on the other side of the house, up on a hill. You know, I mean, they're not the 125 in front and back of my house. You know, this, everything's like way, no, I understand, you're right.
So we're going to make, we're going to vote on it and we'll see what happens, okay? So I'll make a motion to reduce the bond to a thousand. So, all right. Do you, second?
Second.
Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone, all opposed?
I'm opposed.
Where were you, in favor or opposed?
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay, so either way, it's two to two, so the motion fails. So the bond remains at 2,000.
Okay, so, so I can't grind all the stumps.
I think you need to, I mean, yeah, you've got to put up the bond. I mean, this whole process is going to be costly, I get that.
Yeah.
But that money you get back at the end.
I know, I know, the whole, the whole. Okay, so if I give the two, I can grind the stumps, what about grading my front yard?
I think you can.
It goes in a slope, but go ahead, I'm listening.
You'd have to talk with Monica.
No, like, am I going to have to keep coming back every Tuesday to come up with stuff?
As long as the work is done per the plan that was agreed upon in the decision, then.
You don't have to see, you go by the decision, you don't have to see us again.
Okay.
Until you want your money back.
Until you come back and want the money back.
Well, yeah, that's.
That's the next time. You do everything according to that plan, you come back when it's all done and say, I did what you told me to do, give me my money, we'll say, sure, here you go.
All right.
That's the plan.
And take some pictures, too. Bring that.
I get pictures from the dead trees, too.
Part of the decision does say that I will be making site visits, so.
That's fine. I welcome the site visits, but one thing I would like is you to inform me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When you're going to make visits because it is my property. That's the one thing I have.
We don't trespass.
No, I know. I just want to be, hey, we're coming by on Tuesday or Wednesday. I mean, I think I have that right as a taxpayer.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to the beginning. Continued public hearings, 247 Chickering Road, Enterprise Bank. Application for special permit, site plan review, special permit under 195-8.10 to 8.17, 195-10.7, the North Andover zoning by law. Applicant proposes a 3,200-foot square foot bank branch office with drive-up window, general business zoning district.
Okay. So this is continued from the May 21st meeting. In front of you is a redline version of the decision, so I would say to work off of that because that incorporates some changes, but also the applicant has requested some modifications to the conditions. So that would be conditions number 26, 30, 31, and 46. So I want to draw your attention specifically to those changes.
Okay. Have you looked at all of those requests?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with all those requests that are in there? Are there any that you don't?
Again, I would, since it's the board that okay's the decisions, I, it's important for you to weigh in on that.
We plan to, I'm just.
They make, they make sense to me.
Okay. Which ones were they?
That would be 26.
26, so.
And that deals with the lighting underneath the canopy rather than the, I call it wall pack lighting, but they just call it.
Yeah, I think that was what, that was what was intended.
Okay.
Which one?
The next one was number 30.
I don't want to start amending our monitors just, just because somebody doesn't want to follow it. I mean, what happens in reality is if you don't need it, you don't do it, is, but I don't want to put it formally as a decision to make that our practice.
I was going to say, I'm not sure, it says you may request a reduction in the frequency of such monitoring. I mean, to me, that's, you know, a minor modification. If we need to make a minor modification, then come let us know.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Just submit a minor modification. This is, those terms are basically allowing you to submit a minor modification, which you can do anyway.
Or we get, or we get towards maybe the end of the project, or if it were into the winter season when things aren't happening, then we'll get a request typically to suspend monitoring, of course, because nothing's happening. So that's, that's pretty common.
And this is in the section prior to issuance of site work, building permit or construction. Yeah. I, well, let's take out 30 and 31. I think you can do those anyway, but I don't think it needs to be part of the decision. Agree with that.
Monica, could you quickly put up the drawings of the site?
Sure.
I just wanted to react myself to that.
Give me a second.
And the only reason for the Don Bornstein, Johnson and Bornstein, 12 Chestnut Street, Andover, attorney for the applicant, the only reason for those proposed additions to 30 and 31 were to cover those exact things that were just mentioned.
Yeah.
There's dead time in the winter on the project, but if that can be handled through a minor modification or something like that, we're happy to do it that way.
Might even be able to be done.
It is, it's administrative.
Administratively.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work at the administrative level, then come to us, but I think we can handle that informally.
Oh, wrong one.
And the last change was paragraph 46.
Yeah.
Just noting, we're expecting an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Is that tomorrow night?
Yes, it's scheduled for tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow night. So we think we're at an endpoint with them as well. That just is noting that the planting selections or whatnot will be according to the order of conditions that are for the plantings within the buffer zone.
All right. No concerns.
And the other, the only other comments we had were just some housekeeping issues.
Okay. There any members, this is, this public hearing is still open, so anything else that you'd like to add?
No, we just appreciate the board's time on it and appreciate getting the draft from Monica nice and early and have an opportunity to, to address some of the minor changes we requested to the draft decision.
Any members of the public wish to make any comment? Okay, I see none.
I just had, yeah, because I think this was the one that I wasn't fully up to speed on. If, does it say a tear down of the existing building?
Yes.
Okay.
So the Enova Hospital will be.
The Boulder, Better, Veterinary Hospital?
Oh, okay, Bolgers. Oh, that's right, yeah, I was on there, yeah, I was on there before, yeah, now, now.
With the six lights around the property.
Yep, okay, then. So what happens?
Got a lot going on.
You forget all these things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the site plan review special permit for 247 Chickering Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Does anybody need more time with the draft decision?
Quick review.
The variances have already been granted, Monica?
Yes.
All right, great. We like when you go to the ZBA first, so that we're approving legal plans.
And in the red, red edit here, are yours, yours?
It's a, it's a mixture of both. Went through it a couple of times, the applicant went through it as well. So if you see anything, please let me know now. Oh, thank you.
In St. Paragraph Weltland instead of Wetland.
Oh.
Okay, what's it not box?
It's a, it's a little key box, so that the fire department, they, they have a master keys and they have access to a key to the facility to get in.
I'm going to use that.
All right, so can we get a motion to approve?
As amended.
As amended.
Yes, motion to approve the site plan review special permit for 247 Chickering Road as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. Thank you. And thank you for all your outreach to the neighbors. This was one where all the comments we got were positive, so we certainly appreciate that. Okay. 1725 Turnpike Street, AL Prime Energy Consultants. Also a continued public hearing. Application for special permit, site plan review under section 195-8.10 through 8.17 and 195-10.7. Applicant proposes to replace the existing convenience store with a new relocated 1,605 square foot building and expand the associated canopy within the general business zoning district. And I believe there are going to be some increased number of islands or gas pumps, pumps, thank you. Okay. Anything new in this one, Monica? Where do we sand?
So, yes, so again, you have a red line version or red line slash blue line version in front of you. So there's been, let me see, the applicant had, in addition to just some housekeeping, the applicant had several issues that they wanted to discuss with the board.
Okay.
Let me see, the first one, let me see, I would say, you'd start with item 20, actually, no, that was, item 30, which is the hours of operation. In the original version that I sent over, I think I had the hours from 6 until 10. The applicant's asking for their hours of operation to be noted as 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Okay. What are the current hours of operation?
It fluctuates, but approximately 5:30 to 10:30, and they open, it depends on the time of the year and in that ballpark, so.
So why, why would we be increasing that?
We're just looking to have that little bit of flexibility to go at 5 to 11 because a guy might show up a little early, open up a little late, you know, it would not look, we're just looking at 18 hours.
I think one of the concerns that a butter brought up was the lights, but I think it was the, the under canopy lights that were on.
Yeah, and the picture we saw was like 3 o'clock in the morning, so the open and close at 5 or 6 doesn't really affect that, but still, 11, 5, 11, I'm not.
We presently open before 6:00 AM, presently, so we're looking to preserve that.
Okay.
The normal commute, the customers are waiting when we normally open.
Which is 5:30?
Between 5, 5:30 usually.
Okay. Okay, so we'll come back to that. What else?
Okay, I think I answered your question about the construction monitor under item 33, if you still have that as a concern.
I don't really have it as a concern, I was more a question what the construction monitor is. We have it, we'll have it under construction control with the design architect and myself is the engineer of record, and we'll be submitting construction control documents. I didn't know if that was what you're looking for, if you're looking for someone on top of that.
You can work that out with planning if this is the standard condition that we put in, as long as the person's acceptable to the planning department, then it's fine.
Okay, what else, Monica?
Let me see, there was number 34, which is the environmental monitor, so.
Similarly, we'll have an LSP overseeing the work, and I didn't know if that satisfies that requirement or if we have to have someone else.
Depends on who it is, so, you know, as long as they're.
We can certainly, I wasn't objecting to the condition, just more a question as to what it meant.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm hitting everything here. Let me see, so the fire department agreed that the building did not have to be sprinkled, so that was under item 50. However, I think item 50 deals with certification of a fire suppression system, so the fire department did want an under canopy of fire suppression system, so I don't know if you wanted to have a certification for that as well or how you wanted to handle that.
All right, this says a commercial fire sprinkler system must be installed, so we're saying that that doesn't?
Right, the fire department doesn't need that for the convenience store, however, under the canopy, they did ask for a, an under canopy of fire suppression system.
So we need to change this to a fire suppression system must be installed beneath the canopy?
Yes.
Yeah, I have no problem. I mean, that's a state regulation, so we have one now, we're going to have one, and it's in the plan.
Is the building, not the building, you don't, you don't want to sprinkle out the building?
No, because of the expense, the water's on the other side of the street. We're going to put a hydrant in at the corner of Colonial Ave and 114.
The fire department left sprinkling the inside of the building to the discretion of the applicant.
No way it's living there. Okay. Okay, so we can make that change?
Okay.
To say that a fire suppression system must be installed beneath the canopy?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and I think the rest were just, I was able to explain just the standard in terms of the, the other process, so those were, unless there's other concerns that you have.
I had one other, which was item 27, it just had a blank as far as the.
Oh, yes.
So I was suggesting 48 hours, but.
This deals with snow, snow clearance?
Yeah.
And if you wanted to put a timeframe on how long it has?
I don't remember seeing that before.
No, some, you don't typically do that, I've seen it other places, so I don't know if you wanted to put a stipulation on that or not.
48 hours makes sense, what do you guys think?
48 hours is fine.
If there's a hydrant that's going to be installed, don't we typically have a standard that we list in the decision?
Oh, in terms of the, the type of hydrant?
It has to be the same one that the fire department has the tools for and things like that.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We, I've already discussed with the DPW and with the fire department, so we'll do whatever, whatever it is that they want.
It's the Eddie fire hydrant.
Yes, the Eddie left.
Okay.
The Eddie left.
Okay.
Did we address item 30? I know we talked about it, the hours of operation.
We're going to come back to that.
Oh, yeah.
Because we, so since the public hearing is still open, there maybe people want to comment on that and, you know, like to hear.
The only other comment I had was limits on the hours of construction, which we have no problem with the site work where there's equipment running around and stuff like that, whatever is in here, but it's not uncommon that if we have someone who's doing like interior laying floor tile or something like that, that they're not restricted on their hours. They're inside, it's not going to cause any annoyance to any neighbors or anything like that.
That would be under 57. It's pretty much the standard language that's there, well, it's the standard language that's there in terms of the limited construction hours.
Yeah, we certainly don't have a problem with construction hours for any outside exterior work.
So you're saying if it was, if someone was there after 5:00 PM, if they're working inside, is that what you're?
Yeah, so typically, when, you know, you've got a lot of people working on a site, trying to get it open, the floor guys will come in at night and they'll work and putting the floor tile down because they don't want anybody else walking around while they're doing that.
I'm not even sure I can characterize that as construction.
It's all how you define it in terms of, you know.
Yeah, but, but I also don't want to say exterior and then they're jackhammering inside, you know, so I think we'll leave it, but if you're doing it inside and nobody's seeing it, I don't think it's, I don't think you're violating the spirit of what we're talking about, you know? But if you're jackhammering at midnight inside, I'm not gonna give you a clearance because you're inside, you know, if it's people doing flooring, you know, well, it depends on the flooring, you know, when they did it in my house, it was pretty loud. So, okay, so I think, well, the public hearing is still open, so I don't have any more questions for the applicant, I think you guys have answered all our questions, you've reviewed the draft decision, so if, and we have heard from, from neighbors, but if anyone wants to come up from members of the public, has questions, comments, now would be the time.
Hey, Chris Carter, fifteen Colonial Ave, in the direct butter. So I just wanted to comment on the request for the new hours. Currently, we don't have an issue, that we, I say we as the neighborhood and my family don't have an issue with the hours of the operation. I don't see when they open, I've driven by it like five fifteen and I've not seen it open, five thirty, five forty-five, I'm not sure. Currently, the lights shut off around ten, the canopy lights for the pumps, so indicating closed. I think if you extend to eleven, there's a potential for sleep interruption with traffic coming, people at the pumps and stuff. Currently, I mean, ten o'clock's reasonable, I think eleven o'clock's a little too late to be so close to the neighborhood. I think, you know, that's what I have to say about that, so I hope that's taken into consideration when making that decision.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Caroline Castaldo, Colonial Ave as well. Actually.
What number?
Eighty-five.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm out a lot and the, the gas station closes at nine, it's pretty closed at nine o'clock, so I don't know if they keep the lights on till ten, but it's been till nine, and I think it's adequate. We, we've just had a couple of episodes in the neighborhood of kids going to the convenience store, walking close to the homes that are right by one fourteen, and they've done some tree damage. I don't know if one of our neighbors will speak to that, but we've had some issues with that later in the evening, so I think nine o'clock is reasonable. I think eleven would be difficult for definitely the immediate abutters, and we've had some loud groups walking through the neighborhood. So I don't know if they're buying, I'm not sure what they're getting at the convenience store, but that's, that's happened quite a bit lately.
Okay.
So I think that with the lighting factor and, I think nine o'clock is reasonable. My, you know, I'm hoping I can address this. My other thing is I've done just a little bit of research and I've looked at some of the other gas stations that the Prime does own in Tewksbury and Wilmington. I'm just really concerned, I know it's, the expansion's gonna happen, but I'm really concerned about the upkeep. Some of the ones that I've looked at, I mean, they're really not up kept that well, and this is really close to our neighborhood, so I'm hoping that that's something that the planning board will at least have some regulations or, for some plantings or something.
What specific concerns do you have about upkeep?
Well, when I drove by some of the gas stations, that frankly, they weren't very clean looking. It was just like older brick and not, to me, it just didn't look really well, well kept up. And I'm just hoping that if it's that close to our neighborhoods, considering the property values and the town and what we should expect from North Andover, that it will conform to what we would like our town to look like, for all of us, because it is one fourteen and it's right out there. And of course, we, of course, we live next to it, so that, that was a concern of mine, because I did look into that.
So like the landscaping and stuff?
I mean, essentially wasn't any landscaping at a couple of the ones I looked at, and I mean, frankly, some of the buildings didn't look like they were really being kept up. So, and I mean, even, even a little bit with the building that we have now, I know the, hopefully the improvement will be better, but I mean, I'm hopeful for that, that if they're gonna build something new, there's gonna be some, at least some landscaping and some greenery and it's gonna be kept up.
And I believe that is part of it, and one of our findings here is that the applicant has provided a landscape plan and an architectural elevation plan. The architectural features and landscape design has been approved as consistent with the surrounding area, so we're, we're counting on that as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Will we visit the site too? Do we, do we, I think I saw on here a site visit, is it towards the end, like, like prior to occupancy, I think, certificate of occupancy? Forty-seven? Maybe we can check.
Yeah, planning staff shall review the site.
Yeah, so maybe we can.
Specifically to look at the lighting, but I'm sure they'll work back.
Yeah, well, maybe there should be something that they were about the landscaping, and usually we have it on the bus landscaping condition that if the landscaping is adequate,
It's like if any landscaping dies, it should be replaced?
Yeah, that sort of thing, or it's, yeah, so you may want to just expand that.
Okay, like, should I create like a separate condition under?
That's probably a good idea to do that, yeah, it's that you'll review the landscaping, make sure that it's adequate, because you may turn out you need a little bit more just based on the reality of the situation.
All right, so under prior to certificate of occupancy, I'll add a new condition that says landscaping will be reviewed for condition or, I can wordsmith it some.
Planning staff shall review the landscaping to confirm that it complies with the landscaping.
Well, it was a plan, right?
Plan provided.
That they presented, yeah.
And it's a lie.
I assume that, that's part of the plan. Okay, thank you, anyone else? Okay. Coming to talk or leaving? Talking?
I'm talking.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Lana Gill and I'm the abutter on the other side of ten Colonial Avenue. I just wanted to ask a question, how long will this construction take place and, you know, when will it start, when will it end?
Okay.
Maybe, do I get an answer now?
Sure, you wanna come, yep. So first they need an approval, and then there has to be the appeal period, so in case if anybody appeals, if nobody appeals within twenty days, then they can post a bond and start, and what would you think in terms of the timeframe, assuming how that goes?
Well, I still have to get plans from an architect that are construction plans that would be suitable for the building inspector to, to rule on, and we'll have to get a fire suppression plan, we'll have to get the details together for the hydrant, I mean, there's a lot of work. This probably won't start until sometime in August or so at the earliest, and I would expect the whole project will take about three or four months. The building might take a little bit longer to do the inside, once we get the building shell up, it might take a little bit longer till it's actually open, but the majority of the work, work will be done inside that timeframe.
And what for the hours of construction? Sorry, I'm just right there, so I'm just.
Hours of construction are between seven AM and five PM Monday through Friday, and eight to five on Saturday, no construction on Sunday, which is what we pretty much do across the board.
Yeah, we have no problem, we normally don't have construction on Saturdays.
Yeah.
Okay, and just to make sure there's gonna be no trucks, right, parked on Colonial?
No trucks on Colonial, did we put that in?
Yes, we did.
Yep, we put that, they agreed to that and we put that in. Yep.
And I just wanted to say, you know, I agree with prior neighbors, I pulled up hours of operation at six to nine right now, and on Saturday it's ten.
Well, that may be, so just on that, I don't think there's anything limiting their hours right now.
No, I know.
So they're doing, I'm just, just saying that they're doing that voluntarily.
No, I know.
They could be open much earlier.
And we do like.
Right. Appreciate it.
You know, we appreciate it, especially, you know, abutters nearby because of, you know, for obvious reasons.
Sure, sure, I'm just, my point is just, if we do increase the hours that they're allowed to open, doesn't mean they're necessarily gonna open those, but.
Right, and can I ask if eventually they decided to go twenty-four hours, is that an option or is that?
No, if there are hours set here, whatever they are, if it was gonna change, they'd have to come back and seek to modify that.
I'm just curious, okay.
Probably, they'd have to come back.
Okay, okay, I think that's it for me, thank you.
All right. One more?
Hello, I'm Catherine Kendrick, twenty Colonial Avenue, I'm across the street, and this past Monday, we had a problem in that it was about seven o'clock at night and we had four or five very rowdy teenagers walking down in front of our house, and they started pulling down branches from the large oak tree that we have in front of our house, beautiful tree, has been there for a long time, and they pulled down one of the major branches and then they cut across to the convenience store. My husband and I did report it to the police station when it did happen, I don't know who they were, but listening to the request to have the hours extended concerns me, because I think when we first had our, one of the earlier meetings, the neighborhood was concerned that the expansion of the convenience store might become a congregation place for teenagers, and so I am concerned, as the other neighbors are, that extending the hours could, could lead to more incidents in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I think the, we've addressed a lot of issues, I think the hours, are still they open? I don't know, I, if they're open now, five thirty to ten thirty, I don't really, but that's when they say they open and close, so, I mean, if they don't, if they don't do that every day, that's great, but.
I think what you do is you set a time and then you say good review in a year, like the same way we sometimes do with the parking, it's the only way you're gonna know, because you'll never know for sure if you got it exactly right.
Yeah, so.
So I, I.
Right now, there are no time limits.
Yeah, right now, you're right, so, I mean, six to ten is in the decision, that's what we normally do, I'm okay with that, and then with the revision that we can do in a year, to see if there are any problems or not.
Yeah, I, I'd lean towards a little bit, I don't really have a problem with the ten o'clock, because I, I mean, I don't think there are very many people getting gas after ten o'clock, but I do, I think there are people going to get gas before they go to work in the morning, and they're probably not teenagers up at five thirty in the morning.
That's true.
So, they don't get up till noon, is my understanding, so I'd be inclined then to maybe offer earlier start times and keep with the ten o'clock, especially if we're hearing that they're really not open until ten very late, so maybe five to ten or five thirty to ten, it doesn't seem like early is a problem.
I think the five, five to ten sounds, sounds good.
More time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I go.
Five to ten?
Yeah.
Go past ten, yeah.
So we're gonna set it at five to ten, if that winds up being an issue, then come back and talk with us, you know, if you have people at ten o'clock and you have a big rush of people that are coming in at ten o'clock and you're trying to, come let us know. I don't think that's gonna happen, but let us know, okay, so we'll set it at five to ten. Five AM to ten, okay, anything else? So can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the site plan review special permit of seventeen twenty-five Turnpike Street.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, public hearing closed, we're gonna review the decision.
Monica, again, are these red edits yours, solely yours, or, they look pretty innocuous,
Yeah, these were, yeah, these were once I moved myself.
Okay, so number twenty-seven, we're gonna make properly disposed within twenty-four hours, correct?
Forty-eight, you said?
Twenty, twenty-seven, the snow.
You said forty-eight hours.
Within forty-eight hours, yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I'm just confirming that.
Monica, in number eight, could you use septic system, I think would probably be, but my question is, are they putting an entirely new septic system?
They're removing the septic, so they need to get an abandonment permit from health, the health department, and then they're gonna be tying into the sewer.
Okay, so it is gonna be, is there anywhere it says that it's currently serviced by ten, we're in septic system, but the septic system will be replaced?
No, but I should add that, so like.
Okay.
Number eight, finding? And so we're gonna amend, what number is the, are the hours?
Thirteen is route one.
The hours are number thirty?
Supposed to route one forty-four.
Yeah, so number thirteen, Monica, at the intersection of route one fourteen and Colonial Avenue.
Let's see what I have here.
Route one forty-four.
Oh, different locations.
Boy scout, sure.
And again, so.
Thank you.
Thirty, the business will operate daily from six AM to ten AM, it doesn't have to operate, so the business is allowed to operate from five AM until ten PM.
Okay.
They want to open at eleven AM, that's up to them. Or may operate, may operate daily from five AM till ten PM. Okay, I don't have anything else. All right, anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, can we get a motion to approve as amended?
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved as amended. Thank you to everyone who provided feedback, and thank you to the applicant. Okay, next, let's see where we're at. New public hearings, six thirty Turnpike Street, Blue Cod Holdings LLC. That sounds fun, Blue Cod, all right. Good evening. All right, Monica, you want to tell us what we're talking about?
Okay, so it's an application for special permit, site plan review under part three, site plan review, and one ninety-five dash ten point seven of the town of North Andover bylaw to allow for the construction of a two hundred and ninety-five square foot addition with associated landscaping and storm water improvements. This project is located in the CDD three zoning district, and you're, this is site plan review because the parcel abuts residential properties to the rear, the.
Can we get the locus?
Let me see.
You're ahead of me. We figure out where the, where is this?
So that is, let me see, what is the nearest cross?
Just down the street from the property we've been talking about for the last couple of months.
Which property?
The corner at Hillside.
Hillside?
Okay, this application has gone through department review, so conservation stated that there are wetlands to the right of the parking lot, but the proposed work is outside of the hundred foot buffer zone. Any additional work that occurs within the hundred foot buffer zone will require a conservation filing. Fire has reviewed the plan and they have stated or that the applicant will install an automatic sprinkler system and or upgrade their, their detection monitoring system. The elevator that is installed will be rated for a forty-five hundred pound capacity that will accommodate a stretcher in full crew. The elevator will be fashioned with a backup battery powered, powered lowering system in the case of power loss, and an automatic wet sprinkler system will be installed throughout the entire building. The existing fire alarm system will be upgraded and expanded to cover the addition and comply with the current town's signal transmission requirements. Police reviewed and they had no concern. Engineering reviewed, the applicant initially sought a waiver for storm water review, however, after DPW reviewed the calculations, they asked the applicant to go for a, the outside stormwater peer consultant, so the peer consultant reviewed their calculations and actually those came in, I think the applicant actually made some modifications based upon the consultant's review and agreed to, agreed, made an agreement actually this morning, which I received.
All right, gentlemen?
Chairman, members of the board and planning staff, my name is Mike Dorington, manager of Blue Cod Holdings LLC, the applicant and owner of six thirty Turnpike. Alongside me today is Robert Gata. Robert represents Mavros Company, which is my general contractor, which will be overseeing all the work at the site. The impetus for me taking this project on is the building, once I purchased it a little over a year and a half ago, I initially identified that it needed some upkeep and some tender loving care, but more importantly, it needed to have accessibility increased dramatically. So the elevator, given that it's traditionally has been a medical building and will continue to be a medical building. and will continue to be a medical building, that was deemed necessary. And so, we decided to site it on the elevator on the front side of the building, on 114, the busier side away from the residential areas. There's minimum work. There's going to be no work inside the buffer zone. We are complying with all state, local laws in terms of the building and bringing it up to code and looking to run, you know, a first-class operation there.
So, what's there now?
Medical office. There's pediatrician and some other medical practitioners in the building. The third floor is actually empty. The lease ran out and I decided not to re-lease it, trying to keep as much of the building empty, knowing that I was going to go through the renovation process.
And you anticipate those tenants will stay and...
All the tenants' leases run through year end. So, my goal really is to renovate the building and have it be a much better product at the end of the day than it currently is and to be much more user-friendly to the people that need to seek medical care with physicians. So, that's sort of the current situation of the building.
So, this, you know, I guess you call it addition, is really just the elevator?
It's just the elevator. There's no...
So, it's not really any more parking or...
There's no parking. There's no additional rentable square footage. It's just the accessibility. I am replacing the siding and windows. I'm also going to replace the fence towards the rear of the property that abuts the residential neighborhood and also adding in some, probably some dark American Arbor Vitae or some other material that will further provide some buffer. But there's absolutely no additional work, if you will, outside of that envelope of the current building besides the addition. And the elevator itself takes up about a third of it. The mechanical room and the new entrance lobby, you know, collectively then add up to the 295, I think, square feet addition.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
So, it's going to stay a medical building yet?
It's going to stay office, medical building. The hours of use traditionally and currently have been around from nine in the morning to five o'clock at night. I've... All the lights, external lights, there's some pack lights on the side of the building. The back of the building have down lights and those usually go off after a reasonable time, after the close of business. And then there's some lighting around each doorway, which is a standard sort of exterior doorway light, which is also on timer that usually goes off around nine-ish, just to provide some general security lighting for the building.
So, it's three stories right now?
It's three stories, correct.
Three usable stories? Like, do they use all?
Three usable stories, correct.
If you don't mind me asking, what do they currently use? Is it just inside stairs for like access to the third floor, like that you want to use an elevator?
That's correct.
And if we get ADA compliance, I'm sure you'll...
Correct. Yeah, so it'll be new walkway that's ADA compliant that will extend around the front of the building to the side so we can get the proper grade, if you will, to enter the lobby, of which anybody using that part of the building will be able to access the second and third floors via the elevator if need be or the internal staircase, which will be opened up to the lobby. People going into the first floor, there's a side entrance, a separate entrance to that space in the building, which those people will also be able to... It's the same grade, so they'll be able to go right in there without any problem. And there's a back... To the back of the building, towards the residential neighborhood, there's a back staircase that is rarely used by the tenants.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Okay. Monica, where are we at? Any peer review?
It's actually being concluded. I received an email this morning stating that the peer consultant said that she accepts the recommendations for the increase inside of the infiltration system and is comfortable with the design at this time.
So, we can probably have a draft decision for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, looks pretty good. Looks like so we'll get a decision drafted and we'll vote on that at the next meeting. That's probably... That's going to be in July. In terms of the date, it's currently scheduled for July 2nd. I wanted to see if members of the board would actually be amendable to July 9th. I know that July 2nd week just for me is tough. I'm going to be out of town. I know we have a couple of bigger projects opening, so I know I'd like to be here and I know it's just a tougher week. So, if people are amendable, I'd like to change that to July 9th. Okay, all right. So, we're going to tentatively schedule that to continue this public hearing for July 9th of this year and we intend to vote on that date.
Okay. Would there be an issue with starting some of the work? There's some stumps left over from a previous owner that I need to remove from the front or just general...
I mean, I think you could...
Or siding. I can just probably get a building permit for that?
General site work.
I think general site work you could do anyway, just not...
Just the elevator-related elements?
Right, exactly. Elevator stuff you can't do, any other...
Everything else is available.
Fixing up of the property that you would normally do without coming to us? That's fine.
We could also have apartment for the windows and siding.
Those are generally building permits, so...
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right, continued until July 9th. It may not be here too because the zoning board meets that same day, so it may be at a different location. So, just check in with Monica. All right. Moving right along, 701 Salem Street, 701 Salem Street Realty Trust. Application for special permit, site plan review, parking under Part I, Part III, and 195-10.7, the North Andover zoning bylaw to allow construction of an 8,700-square-foot addition to an existing building to be used for mixed-use retail restaurant, together with associated parking spaces, stormwater management facilities, landscaping signage, and other site improvements. General Business Zoning District. Okay. Monica, where are we at? Tell us about this.
All right. So, again, we received a permit as you discussed. Let me... Just give me one second here. Okay. Let me see. The applicant's application was received on April 30th for the expansion of the existing commercial structure utilizing adjacent parcel of land. The applicant has filed permits for parking reduction, so it would be a relief for two parking spaces, common parking areas with multiple-use facilities, and the site plan review due to the construction of a structure over 2,000 square feet that requires five more parking spaces. This application has been reviewed by the various departments. The fire department has stated that while the analysis has already shown on the plan, we'd like to see how a vehicle compared to our ladder to ensure that it's able to navigate the site. And they also ask questions about where the location of the fire alarm panel will be located. Let me see, they have a couple other questions as well that are yet to be resolved.
Outstanding fire questions, that's fine.
Yes. Building has reviewed the plans. They say it's an allowed use. They just made note of the parking, which would require 72 spaces, which includes handicapped spaces. And they just... Restated that their applicant's asking to be allowed to have 70 spaces instead. It's in compliance with zoning and of course signage would have to be reviewed by planning. DBW reviewed the plan as well and had some issues in terms of like where water lines are located, things of that nature. So, the plans would definitely have to be reworked to incorporate some changes that the DPW noted. Water lines or sewer, things like that. Let me see. The health department has had some preliminary discussions with the applicant. The dumpster is going to be in the same general location, so they were fine with that. And again, this has been sent out for both civil and stormwater review. The first reviews have come back and they've been sent to the applicant, so the applicant still needs to respond back.
Okay. Gentlemen? Do you want to tell us what you guys are looking to do?
Good evening. Brian Vaughn of Smolak and Vaughn for the petitioner, 701 Salem Street. With me tonight on behalf of the owner, 701 Salem Street Realty Trust, project team is Phil Henry from Civil Design. He's the engineer. We also have Tom Galvin and Sean Carey from JD LeGrasse and Associates, who are the project architects. And Jim Zanakis and Mike Zanakis are also here, who are representatives of the owner. Just by way of background, the site includes two adjacent parcels. The first parcel that we're all familiar with is 701 Salem Street and that's the location of the existing J&amp;M Country Store and Taki's Pizza. Looking at that from the street, the parcel to the right is 695 Salem Street. It's currently a single-family residential structure. That was acquired by J&amp;M Realty Trust last year. The other property, 701 Salem Street, was acquired back in 95. 701 Salem Street went through planning board review and had a site plan special permit issued originally back in 1997. So, what we're looking to do here is raise the residential structure and raise a portion of the existing commercial structure on 701 Salem Street, expand the size of the marketplace, and then improve the traffic circulation, parking, et cetera, around it.
How many structures are going to be there?
It's... We're going to end up with one currently. There are two on the two separate lots when it's all said and done.
The house coming down?
House is coming down. A portion of the existing structure to the... Kind of to the right-hand side, I guess, where there's currently a dry cleaner, will be coming down. I think it's the third sheet.
Which is expanding, okay.
Monica?
Can you pull up the aerial?
Right there.
Sure.
Is 695, is that lot? What is that zone for?
So, the both lots are actually zoned general business, GB. And so, on the residential lot, we have currently a pre-existing non-conforming residential use. And in fact, I guess, structure, I believe it's currently within the setback. So, by raising that structure, we're actually going to be... Although we're enlarging the size of the building, we're going to be reducing an existing non-conformity. And we're definitely reducing non-conformity with respect to use as the proposed use is in fact going to now be entirely permitted by right.
And so, what else goes on to that lot? Where the residential structure is now? Some of the parking and landscaping?
Yes, parking and landscaping. Also, it's going to enhance and expand the... Just the driveway access and circulation. Currently, there is no access to the right side around the commercial building and you kind of have a really difficult circulation on-site. So, you know, that's kind of, I guess, the general overview.
And what's the idea for how they... So, you're going to get rid of the dry cleaner? What's the idea of using the type of mixed-use?
Right. So, the uses actually have been reviewed with the building inspector. I think there's actually another sheet, which will show the proposed uses. Monica, if you can maybe flip to the architectural?
Yes, it just takes me a second to read past it.
But, you know, quickly, just it's looking to expand the size of the J&amp;M market, expand the size of the restaurant, which is Taki's Pizza. It's going to keep the Dunkin' Donuts use, it proposes to, but it's going to be relocated within there. It's also going to keep the dry cleaner use, but within a different area. I think there's a spa, which is a nail or salon or something, which is no longer intended to be there going forward. I think the other use that I guess is technically new is as part of the kitchen, is adding a commissary kitchen, which is just subject to different health regulations will allow for packaging and off-site.
And so, 70 parking slots instead of the seven... How many parking spots are there now?
Forty-one, maybe.
Seventy-two would be required and you're looking to do 70, obviously with the proper amount of handicap still?
Correct.
That doesn't seem to be too big of a deal. Okay. Questions, comments?
You mentioned that there were some architectural designs that might give a feel for how the use is going to play out. Is that in there?
It should be in the plan set. I think it's A101, if I recall on the end.
Yeah, it's the second to last in that sheet right there. It would be Sheet 12.
Well, that looks nice.
If you... If you want, Mr. Chairman, I could explain the exterior portions and then the site and then we could switch to the architecture and give a presentation if you'd like. So... Or I'll defer to...
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
With respect to the uses, if you look at the kind of color-coded portion of this plan down to the bottom right, that's a concept plan, which shows how the space becomes substantially the market space, still maintains the retail cleaners and Dunkin' Donuts, as well as the Taki's Restaurant. And then you have your kitchen, your commissary kitchen, storage. And you'll also have substantially improved loading and access as current conditions.
So, the big changes are the commissary and then just, you know, it looks like added dining space and then just moving everything else around.
Is it a regular restaurant, like operating hours till like late at night, 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock? Or is it just like lunch or like what's the operations?
I believe it's intended to be the continuing Taki's Restaurant. It's just to provide a little bit more of seating location for Taki's.
It's mostly take... So, it's going to stay mostly takeout?
Yeah, it's to allow substantially more seating. But that's been taken into account. You know, that's really, you know, part of the driver for parking spaces and that's been taken into account in the analysis that's been done on parking and reviewed by the building inspector.
Was it liquor license? Was it the last meeting? Was that to support this?
No.
No, was that something different?
No, that was the one on...
Oh, down over here?
Middle side, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That was to go from beer and wine to all alcohol.
Okay.
Looks good.
The same, yeah. Okay. Any members of the public have questions, comments? Yeah, come up. So, we're here for it. Come on up. Just introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
I'm Stephanie DiNazio. I'm Ten Keys Way, across from the existing structure.
Okay.
So, I don't know how this works if I ask all my questions that aren't answered... That haven't been answered yet tonight? Is that how that works?
Yeah, so why don't you get out all your questions?
Okay.
And then we'll have you either sit down or back up. We'll let them answer the questions or we'll answer the questions depending. So, you just give me your list of questions and concerns and ideas and we'll go from there.
Great. One question is, is it just one restaurant or is it going to be two restaurants? Is it going to be the sandwich style and then a sit-down restaurant?
So, go through all your questions?
Okay.
And then we'll let them pop.
Fine. That's one. The second is, would the Dunkin' Donuts just be walk-in Dunkin' Donuts or is the ability to add a drive-through now that the Dunkin' Donuts is moving to that right side? The other questions I had is related to signage. So, is the existing sign going to stay the same? Like, will the sign stay the same height or will it be changing in height? Will there be different lighting on the sign? Will it be illuminated? What are the hours of the sign being illuminated if it is? Where will it be located? And then that leads to lighting in general. When I came to the offices the other day, I didn't see any lighting plans and my questions were around building lighting, parking lot lighting. Is there any proposals for street lighting around that area? Front and back and side of that building, as far as parking goes and lighting, I mean. Other questions I had was around the hours of operation currently. You guys close before 10:00, I believe. And I was curious as to whether or not with the sit-down restaurant, those hours of operation were going to change either on the front end or the back end for any of the occupants in that building or if the building would close as a whole at one time. at one time? Other questions I had was around landscaping. I personally think there could be some improvements to the landscaping around the structure, and I'd be curious to know what would be the plan for landscaping, and furthermore, maintenance of landscaping. I live on the corner right behind on the inside of Keys Way, and I know at least two times a year, we have to clean up a significant amount of trash in our yard, our neighbor's yard, and across in the land that is undeveloped, and it's not our trash. So I'd be curious to know if there could be plans around maintenance of trash on a regular basis for that building. And then other questions I had would be related to just the overall traffic increase that this could potentially, I mean, I don't know how familiar everybody is with Salem Street, but I'm sure a lot of people can attest to the fact that the traffic on Salem Street has increased dramatically. So I know there's a bus stop on their side, and there's a bus stop on my side, and in the morning, it's terrifying to have my nine-year-old at the corner of that street. And partly, it's because of where the current entrance is to that building. I know it's moved. When people are slowing down or slamming on their brakes, because they finally see that someone's trying to turn into that structure, they try to bypass the slowed cars, and they then turn into my street, which is where our bus stop is. So I'd be curious, what if any considerations around the street, and whether it's changing the speed limit in that area, or a yellow light, blinking light, some sort of consideration around the traffic there?
You don't have any control over that.
So do I go to a different meeting for that?
I don't know if there is any meeting about that, but that you would have to either talk to a.
Yeah, that's really, that's some combination of the Board of Selectmen and the Police Department.
Okay. So this structure could be approved with no accommodations related to street signs?
Well, I mean, there may be some things about egress exit, I mean, you know, immediately into the thing, but the fact that if people drive too fast on Salem Street, that's not a whole lot we can do about that.
Okay, what about parking signs on either Abbott or Keys Way with respect to landscaping trucks and trash docks, not parking on our street so that they can go and eat in there for lunch?
Well, do they go eat lunch there?
Yeah, for sometimes hours and leave their trucks idling on the streets.
So again, that's not necessarily having to do with like this site and this site project? That would be, again, a police and a Board of Selectmen, unless they're like.
Well, I've already dealt with the police, so.
Unless they're actively working for them.
I think we have a little room to play there. I mean, I understand exactly what's happening, is that you got a landscape truck, it's not easy to fill into a parking space.
Trucks, yeah.
But what I think is special about this, and I think, you know, first of all, I think that I like this plan, I think this is a good plan, and we wanna make it work, but I think it's incumbent upon us, because this is unique in North Andover, where this is a commercial structure in the middle of a sea of residential. It's really different than anything else, and I think it's our obligation to make sure that there's reasonable protections to the neighbors here, so.
I think that's kind of what I'm looking for. I know that we've dealt with the police department in the past as far as communicating with the trash companies and the recycling company, as well as the landscapers not to park on our street. And usually, once a year, we have to kinda re-circle back with them, and they've been good, but if they don't park on our street, they park on the one across from us, which doesn't really, it becomes very dangerous, because those trucks are large and trying to pull out around them, or UPS trucks or whatever trying to come in. Our street's very narrow, and it's not easy to maneuver. So I'm just wondering, with the 72 parking spots, like, is there any, is there going to be space to accommodate large vehicles that are gonna then wanna park in those, you know, need to park on that property and not on the street? Because that's a decent amount of the clients in the middle of the day, not all of them, but there are a lot that have larger commercial-type vehicles that park there to eat. And if they're sitting now and eating and not eating on my yard, front lawn, or in their trucks while they're running, then they will be in there doing it, but their trucks are still gonna be outside. So I'm just, those are all my thoughts and questions around this.
Okay. See what we can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Done, cut.
Yeah, actually, you know, why don't you, I think a lot of her questions probably are things that Phil would normally answer as he gets into more detail, so I'll turn it over to him.
So I'm happy to answer some of the specifics, but I think it's important that we go over just a general overview of the project, so you guys have a good fundamental understanding of what the existing condition is and what the improvements are. And I think as we go through this, I think we'll touch upon some of her specific questions, and I'm happy to circle back and answer some of the ones that we can answer at this point.
Okay.
Would you mind going to the aerial plan again? I'm sorry. If you could zoom in, yeah. So Mr. Simons was correct in saying that this site is unique in the sense that it's zoned GB in a sea of residential. So when we looked at redeveloping this, we began with that in mind. So this is an aerial underlay here, so I'll use my laser pointer here, so you guys at the board may need to turn around if you wanted to follow. So this is that existing commercial structure right here, it's that staggered Z, Z-looking structure here, and this is the existing single-family home that is on the additional lot that we're proposing to eventually consolidate. And this row of vegetation right here roughly represents the existing property line. So totally, this track is about one and a half acres at the intersection of Abbott Street and Salem Street. This existing structure is about, just to give a frame of reference, is about 5,200 square feet. And as you can see, the addition is 8,700 square feet, and a section of that is overlaid on this existing piece of building that will be demolished. So overall, it's a net of about 73 or 7,400 square feet of new buildable area excluding, you know, we're not taking credit for the removal of that house, we're just talking of the commercial space. So I think it's important just to give you guys, or give everyone a frame of reference of where the addition is happening and where it's located on-site. Currently, this is the existing parking lot, there's a dead end, there's no site circulation onto the abutting property as we currently speak. So there's an existing dead-end parking lot here, and an existing dead-end parking lot here. And there's an existing, as everyone I'm sure is familiar with, there's an existing curb cut that's right here. In redeveloping this site and maintaining the requisite building setbacks and landscape setbacks, abutting residential, which we currently do, we wanted to make sure that we wanted to move this curb cut as far away from the intersection as possible, and I think we've achieved that. Another goal that we had in mind when we were designing the site was to eliminate the dead-end parking that currently resides on both sides of the building, and create a full circulation, not only for vehicles that are gonna use the site, but also for fire and emergency apparatus as well. And then we also wanted to create a space for those landscape trailers, those mini landscape trailers with whether a lawnmower on the back or trailing something, and that's evidenced by, we have spaces here along the building that a vehicle can easily pull in against the building and pull out without using a perpendicular space. We also have some additional space back here that they can utilize as well. We also wanted, another goal that we wanted to achieve was getting, in line with, getting people off the street to walk across the street to use the store, was to also get the loading. And actually, this aerial actually has captured a delivery tractor-trailer loading, this site. So under this scenario, this site is designed to accommodate tractor-trails and loading back here away from on-street. So then it became maintaining requisite landscape separation, also seeing what we can do to enhance it. We are maintaining, there's a row of existing evergreen trees here that we are proposing to maintain, but selectively prune the overhang to accommodate this drive-out, but we're not intending to touch any of the roots. We're also proposing to increase arbor by, or landscaping along the right side of the plan or the north side, and then also intend to meet the spirit of the zoning with regards to street trees and shrubbery throughout the site. So all in all, we're proposing to add 43 trees, over 90 shrubs, and over 300 grasses and flowering perennials.
While you're on that, can you go down to the Salem Street side? I always thought that, you know, that, the fact that there was no buffer there is just kind of pavement to the street, are you gonna put a little buffer in there?
Yeah, so I'm happy you brought that up, Mr. Simons. Currently, the existing parking lot actually encroaches onto the right-of-way, so there's no landscape buffer there right now. The town does require a three-foot parking setback. We are requesting, and this was noted in the, one of the review letters, we're requesting technical relief of that three feet, only because the existing building line creates the parking field, holding requisite lengths and widths of drive-iles and so on and so forth, which left about a foot, a foot and a half of landscaping between proposed curb and property line. But I will tell you, though, that in combination with, we're proposing to redo this whole sidewalk across the Salem Street frontage, there's opportunity, because that sidewalk meanders and is not very efficiently or built or constructed and hasn't been maintained, by holding a five-foot-wide sidewalk, we are able to effectively increase the landscaping to almost about three feet here, and also wider than three feet as you go away from Salem Street. So do we technically meet the bylaw? No, but is it a vast improvement over the existing condition? Yes, and we're certainly not making any matters worse. We are also proposing to add landscaping with along Abbott Street and supplementing that, we can go to the landscaping plan after we review this aerial plan, but there are street trees along Salem Street and Abbott Street, and we're also adding internal landscape islands that is in accordance with the parking landscape section of the bylaw. So the spirit of my argument is that we are, yes, we're expanding in existing use, but we're also trying to mitigate that by creating improvements where we see fit. We're also adding an internal pedestrian connection so that patrons that are walking to the site can easily access from the street to the storefront, and that will be ADA accessible as well. Speaking of ADA accessibility, we're proposing three parking, three ADA parking stalls, because we're proposing 70, there's three required there. As terms of lighting, the site proposes six freestanding parking lot signs, which are a thin, they're like, I guess, your typical thin profile shoebox lighting that will extend to 20 feet tall, and those are designed to shed light downward, not, there'll be no uplighting or sidelighting, so to speak. Those are designed to shed light downwards, and what you're looking at here is a photometric plan that has a bunch of numbers, and those are the foot candle readings at the ground level at a particular spot across the site. And I will tell you, there are zero or near zero at that property line, such that light is directed where it should be and is not directed where it shouldn't be. I'm not the photometric design, but we inherited that in working with the vendor, and that's my understanding of what the lighting is designed to do. There will also be some.
So generally, what we do, what we've been doing recently is that we'll incorporate the photometric plan into the approval and condition that we'll go out once it's all built and done, and check that it meets those, what you say it's going to do.
Okay. And then we received a number of comments through peer reviews and the town department heads, and we found them to be fairly reasonable, they're all addressable. I believe some of the comments in there were either directed at the board for their discretion, but most of the technical comments are easily addressable. So I don't know if you wanna, if you guys had a chance to review any of those in detail, and if you had any questions?
Not yet.
But our goal is to get comments from the board, get comments from the abutters, and really incorporate one submission that incorporates all the comments, so as to most efficiently navigate through this permitting process. So that's our intention, is to submit one final application, or one final resubmission at some later date.
So that was very helpful. Can, I think there were a couple of.
Yeah, so multiple restaurants, it's my understanding that Takis Pizzeria will expand to a seating, so someone can actually order food and sit down at a table, as opposed to order over the counter. So that's my understanding of that. The Dunkin' Donuts, to my knowledge, there's no drive-through being proposed, and we have not discussed any drive-throughs at this point.
Okay, so that's very important, if that changes, let us know, because that is a whole nother consideration.
I think that would be a problem.
I don't think that would be.
I could honestly say the first time the word "drive-through" came up was tonight, so. We, I have never heard "drive-through."
Good, let's keep it that way.
The existing signage and hours of sign, we did not propose any changes to the freestanding sign, it's mine to say that you guys are maintaining the existing signage as is, in terms of its area?
The only increase will be over the new entryway, we have a new gable entrance, so that's the mass on the street side.
Yeah, if we could look at the outside architecture.
Tom Galvin with LaGrassan Associates, I'm the architect for the project. So in the mass, and you can see that we have our entryway to the right in the upper-left corner, again, we're trying to create more glass there. When you look at the existing elevation, which is the other two gables on the left side of the building, the one furthest left is the existing convenience entrance, which is a 36-inch door with smaller windows for the front elevation. And then the second one in the middle of the building is Takis Restaurant right now. So what we're trying to do is get a lot more natural light into the building. On that front elevation also, you can see that we have a lower roof that's at about 12 feet above the sidewalk. This keeps the scale down on the side, basically on the street side of the building, and then we build up in the background to have more clear story, to get more natural light into the interior of the space. And then the height of the building, when you look at the lower right corner, which is the flat elevation of the building, if we could just scan down on the sheet. So just about the middle of the page, that's the flat elevation, so you can see the clear story that I'm talking about above that gable end on the right side, and the storefront area has a lot more glass to it to give that visibility on the street level. And if you just scroll down a little bit more to the floor plan, what we've done is in that 8,700 square feet is the expansion of the existing convenience store. So this is gonna help the owner vend more as far as both the liquor store, the convenience area, and then the commissary is really to help him with prepared meals. He sees a need for that, people who are going home at night, he'd have prepared meals in a freezer case or a refrigerator case, so that's his intent to do this. To the left of the plan, the dark green spot that's right next to our expansion is the existing Takis kitchen area. You can see a smaller kitchen to the left of that, that is gonna be a new kitchen for more of the dining area. So it is intended to have two different restaurant types, one being the sub and pizza element, and then the other one being more of a dining, sit-down restaurant.
Can I ask, is that like table service then?
Yes.
So you will be having like waitstaff wait on people?
Correct.
So it's just not ordering and then?
Right, not cafeteria, where you go pick up.
Like what it is now?
Breakfast, lunch, dinner, or lunch and dinner?
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Yep.
Okay.
So I think I touched on, or I think we've touched on, all of the comments.
So I think I touched on, or I think we've touched on, all of the comments. I got landscape park, and we talked about that lighting. If I miss anything, I'm happy to.
I think...
The only thing likely helpful is maybe walking through the actual landscape plan.
Okay, sure. Monica, could you, yeah, so scroll up to sheet seven, maybe, on that slide right there. There you go. If you just wanna zoom in, so I guess working, I'll work from right to left. Per the zoning, the rear yard setback for a GB district is thirty-five feet, and the side yard is twenty-five feet. However, when you abut a residential, you add fifteen feet to both sides, and of which the first fifteen feet needs to be maintained landscape. So the rear yard or the side yard, this side yard and this side yard, or this rear yard, I should say, and this side yard require fifteen feet minimum landscape, which we provide. And along the true property line here, this is where we're proposing thirty-one arboretum in a linear fashion to create that natural vegetation. The front part of that, or the left side, as you're looking at the plan, will be loman seeded, and that's intended not to have any ground cover, because that is one of the areas we've identified snow storage. So we don't wanna provide nice, you know, shrubs there and then kill them each year with snow. So that's an area we've identified with landscaping. And we're also end capping that with a tree here. There's, we're proposing, we were proposing honey locusts and oaks, I believe, throughout. Walking along the front, the new frontage, so to speak, we are proposing street trees every thirty feet, and then also supplementing them with street trees or trees along the interior of the parking lot. As you make your way down to, on the left side, this is where there's really not sufficient space to create any appreciable plantings. However, we are adding greenery, as previously discussed, and we're gonna be adding some loman seed there. We're also supplementing another tree in front of the storefront on this landscape island as well. Along the true corner, we are, we're gonna be removing some of the existing shrubbery and re-enhancing the corner with some proposed low-lying shrubbery and grasses and flowers alike. And then that is going to extend up along Abbott Street, and then we're gonna be providing street trees along Abbott Street in this widened buffer area here. And then along the back, as I mentioned, there are gonna be existing, they're probably about twenty feet now, existing vegetation that we're maintaining, and we're gonna supplement that with two proposed trees there as well.
Consider it all like a loman fence in the front?
We have not considered that. Are you asking for us to consider that?
I'm thinking about it. I mean, we've done that a fair amount, if you look at different places on 114 and elsewhere. And I mean, and I don't do it as a knee-jerk thing. I mean, I think, 'cause it all matters with context, but there's, if you look at it, it's one of the signature things, I think, in a lot of properties there are. And it isn't necessarily the entire thing, but maybe only in the stretch, you know? So, you know, I think it's a thought, and I think it adds, and I think it creates a differentiation, especially where you're not gonna be able to get much landscaping in.
Okay. Picket, you said, or split rail?
That'd be, yeah, some sort of, whatever. I mean, but you see it, like, we are, on 114 and other places have it there, I think, yeah, so.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I got a totally separate time question. Are you gonna do a four-made, combine the two lots?
Eventually, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think we wanna get a little bit farther along in the permitting process, and then we may either come in on that last hearing with it or maybe after.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Anyone else? Yeah? And just so everyone knows, we're not voting on this today. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, so.
My name's Joe Nicolaiusen. I'm from twenty-five Abbott Street, which is directly behind this property. My primary concern are the hours of operation. I know in the past, we've had a lot of problems. We've had to call the police on several occasions. And it wasn't for rowdy teenagers in the neighborhood, it was for Taki's employees who get out at nine PM and blast their car radios. And it was a problem at the time for us, because we had very young children and, you know, as I said on several occasions, we had to call in the police. And I believe things got quite escalated a couple of times with the police. So I think a nine PM operation is fine. Recently, things have improved with the noise. You know, I think if we can keep it to nine PM, I'm fine with that. If it's going to ten or eleven o'clock, I think we're gonna have a more serious problem. So I wanted to make that clear. Another issue we've had is with vehicles, primarily, you know, trucks, landscaping vehicles, parking directly in front of our house on the sidewalk during the day. It's been a major safety concern of ours, because we try to back out of our driveway, and there's a big truck there, and we can't see around. And on several occasions, my wife has almost been hit trying to back out of our driveway. So, you know, I think going forward with the increased business, that could be even more of a concern, when you have just regular vehicles who don't have a place to park, who are gonna be parking in Abbott Street in front of our house on the sidewalk. So we're very concerned about that. The last thing I wanted to mention is, I wanted to ask if the residential structure was rezoned? I'm a little confused about that. Was that...
So it's a general business, but it's non-conforming, so it was there before...
So it was not rezoned?
Was that...
It was not ever rezoned?
No. It's just non-conforming?
Okay.
So it can stay as residential structure. If it's ever not used or taken down, then it has to go on the underlying zoning, which is general business. So they can knock it down right now and put up a business that complies there right now. So another business could go there now, if they wanted to.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. What are the current hours of operation?
Depending on the time of year, we close as late as ten o'clock.
Yeah, sir?
Hello, my name's Derek Larson. I live at twenty Abbott Street, directly across the street from Taki's. It's gonna be a lot of the same as the, both the two previous neighbors came up with. I'm in an odd situation, as I'm good friends with these guys. My daughter works at Taki's. But that aside, I just think there are some things that if they're taken into consideration, it'll make everyone happier in the neighborhood. I moved in fifteen years ago. It was a mom-and-pop store. It expanded, now it's doubling. So how do we figure out what's best for everyone here? I've been saying, green, green, green. I like the idea of what you mentioned with the fence. I like what my neighbor said, I'm sorry, Stephanie, on, the traffic's crazy. I've been dealing with the police, I've been dealing with, my fence on Abbott Street's been smashed multiple times. They've paid for it and fixed it, so it's been great, but it's still happening from their clientele. How do we figure it out? It's an easement, they can park there, great. What can we do that maybe them drop someone off, get the food, and move on? Not parking Keys, not parking Abbott, something that'd make it easier for everybody. It's a school zone. My kid walks from, my daughter walks from school every day and comes down that sidewalk, and there's no sidewalk, because of the landscaping trucks. I have pictures I can show you today. It's a one-lane road to go down there. Has anyone driven down there at lunchtime? You can't go down there. It's Mad Max. So what can we do to make that better for us? For me, looking out and seeing that new sidewalks? So they don't drive up in the curb? I don't know. No parking? Doesn't matter. I put rocks in front of my yard, they still park there. That's not their fault, but that's their business, they get the gain from it, which I respect that. I'm a small business owner as well, they're expanding, all the power to them. But how are we gonna make it easier for the neighborhood? Because that's my concern, and it's my property, it's my investment. How do I protect it? I put a fence up there, and I'm done putting the fence. I'm done working on it, it's getting smashed, plows have hit it, town's taking care of it, but it's still an issue that I'm dealing with all the time. So this is my first time at a planning board, so I don't know the process. I have issues with noise, light, and traffic. It's all pollution, and the pollution. Every day, Earth Day, me and my daughters go out and we fill up two or three trash bags, the big ones, in my yard. That's in my yard that comes over, nips, booze, you name it, which they didn't sell before. Now they do. New line of business, I respect that. I have no problem with it. But how do we protect both of us? His business, their business to grow, my livelihood, my investment, my property value? It's not a mom-and-pop shop anymore. It's not a convenience. It's a restaurant. It's a bakery. It's whatever they want it to be. Hours of operation, there's some issues with that with me. During the week, I don't want to see them going past ten, eleven o'clock. It's nine o'clock right now, they're out of there by ten, cleaning up. What's it gonna be on the weekends? So my major issues that I've had is air handlers, exhaust, all new things that are gonna be coming in are gonna add noise. What's it gonna look like? Building's gonna be a lot bigger. I'm moving into a strip mall now. Lighting, you mentioned the lights about twenty feet high? Are they dark lights? Are they down angled lights? Do they shut off at night? I literally have to pull down a shade in my house to sleep at night, if not, there's a light coming from the building right into my bedroom. I think Mike did spray paint it for me last year. Can't say that? No? All right. Dumpsters, the noise with that, we've, fourteen years I've been battling with the dumpster company, calling the police, calling waste management, dealing with that for years. Last, for the past year, we've been successful, that hasn't been an issue. What's the pickup? Where's the dumps are gonna be placed? I guess it's all gonna be the same. So that's good. And I've been talking to Jim throughout this whole process. He's been nothing but transparent, and then some. I'm just trying to figure out something that's gonna be best for our neighbors to, they're expanding, we can't. They have business lines, we don't. What we have is what we have, and we can't do anything with it except protect it.
So the way the process is gonna work is that we'll continue this hearing for another date. I think it's great to hear that you've already had discussions, which is great, and we're gonna encourage that to continue, to see, as I've heard from the applicant's agent, that they're gonna try to incorporate as many of these concerns or mitigation into their plans. So we'll continue this public hearing, we'll have another one in July, where we talk about some of these and any changes that have been made. We can only control what's on the site. So we can try to control aspects that affect, like you're talking about trucks parking outside. We can't legislate that, but we can try to encourage and think of ways that we can encourage parking on the site. So I think they've talked about having spaces that accommodate larger vehicles, so I think that's important, and we'll get more into that.
And what if we were to do something with the curbing, so they can't park up on the sidewalk right behind there? Because that's what they do on Abbott Street.
The curb on...
On Abbott.
If it's not on their property, we can't legislate.
I don't know if it's on, it's the sidewalk connected to their property. If there's new curbing that goes in, which they're gonna, they're not cutting it at that spot, but it's on the backside where those three trees are, raise that curbing, and those landscaped trucks can't go down there. And school buses, we'll be able to get by. I'll be able to walk our dogs, my daughter will be able to walk home to school and not have to have all these trucks sitting there.
That, I mean, you can discuss that one, but that would depend on whose property. If it's a town property, then we can't do it.
I have a question. And the buffer zone is, what, fifteen feet? Is that what it is for landscaping?
Yeah, abutting residential.
And if I'm across the street, that doesn't affect me, even though I have no buffer. The buffer for me is I have lights, traffic, everything's gonna be exiting my way now, because right now, they're not supposed to. So I'm gonna have more lights, I'm gonna have more traffic coming my way, but yet I don't get a buffer because I'm across the street? There's nothing there to abut it.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing there for a buffer for me, so I'm just...
Well, there's the street, I mean, that's...
What's that, though? Sound and light travels right through that.
Right. But that's the way they regulate, we can't, that's the way they regulate.
We are proposing some landscaping, we are proposing three trees and some low-lying shrubs. Granted, it's not an opaque barrier, but I have a question. Are you, did you say that there's parking on the north side of Abbott or on the south side of Abbott? On your side?
Oh, it is an easement where the fence is, which they park on, which is fine, but then they'll...
On the south side?
Yeah, I had pictures today, they were parking on both, right in front of my house, right across from the Eliassons, right at their driveway.
How many, like, at lunchtime? How many trucks were we talking about?
I saw six today.
Yeah.
No, five today.
But that, is that sort of ballpark?
Yeah, that's the norm. And we haven't even seen the dump, the garbage trucks that pull up. They'll pull up at five at a time in a summer afternoon, that's not too great of a smell.
I can imagine.
And I did call, I talked to Officer, I think it was Wilson, and I had him come down and do a traffic, and he was like, there's nothing I can do. I mean, we've had hit-and-runs, I've had people steal stuff off my lawns, hit-and-runs with my fence, you know, and things of that nature, and stealing stuff off my yard, all landscaping stuff, so, you know, I don't know who's doing it, but it's all my, you know, lawn furniture, lawn ornaments and stuff. So it's just, and then late nights, you got high school kids up there, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night after everyone leaves. And that's not their fault, I mean, they're at home as well. But then you have people in there, so do the lights shut off at night? Because that's a congregation for high school and college kids, which I don't care, we've all been there. But I live right across the street, and if it's gonna be a restaurant till one in the morning, what's gonna happen after that? What's our parents say about after twelve o'clock, right?
So we'll get some answers on that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Anyone else?
Jim Greer, I live at seven ten Salem Street, which is actually right, my driveway's gonna be right across the street from these guys. And, you know, when you mentioned a fence, I assumed a picket fence, 'cause a, what, a split rail? The problem I'm gonna have is the light. Yeah, you got headlights going right into my driveway and into my, you can't see it, because like I said, I'm right across the street. The elevation, I mean, how high is this gonna be?
About the height of the building, just two feet.
Thirty-two feet.
To the ridge.
To the ridge. How high is the gambrel next door? The one you're tearing down?
Yeah, I believe that's probably about twenty-four.
Yeah, so you get an eight-foot gain there. Yeah, so now I'm gonna be staring at that. I did a little trig, I figured if thirty feet up, I'm a hundred feet back, I need about a twenty-foot fence, so I can't see that. You know, off the cuff. The trash, I got nips, I got Dunkin' Donuts bags, yeah, all kinds of stuff in my yard all the time.
Currently?
Currently. And the biggest concern I have is pulling in and out right there, and the traffic flow, and what time of night you guys are gonna close, or the light's gonna stay on, stay off? Because a twenty-foot-high light is pretty friggin' high, you know?
So, right, so, yeah, I mean, the photometric plan, which will hold them to, indicates that it's not gonna be coming off property, so...
No, the photometric plan, let me tell you, you can turn all these lights, they come straight down, you're still gonna see reflection. And that's what we're gonna see, it's the same effect, we see the moon because of the reflection. I'm gonna get reflected light, we're all gonna get reflected light. You know, that whole idea is it lights up the building, and the light reflects around the surrounding area. It's simple physics. Again, the trash, you all gonna have a liquor license?
Art already does.
We have retail, we see retail liquor license.
I mean, a common victim, let us have table service with liquor licenses.
Does it?
Yeah?
I'd assume so, but...
So my problem is the, you know, the perspective noise that's gonna come out, because the other night was, well, last week, ten, ten-thirty at night, there was something going on in your parking lot.
So, again, so, right, so, again, so what we're considering, so we have to, we have to think about all these things, noise...
I know that.
And lights and things like that, but we're also considering the difference between what this would be and what is there now. So if there's there now...
But you double it.
You double it.
So, but that, so, again, that doesn't necessarily double the business, so I understand, but...
What about the hours?
Okay, so one, we're not gonna have a discussion like this, okay? That's two, that's number one. Two, we're gonna consider all of these things, but I guess, my point is that it's not, we can't solve all the problems that there are now.
I understand that.
There may be problems with the future, but we're gonna, that's what we're gonna try to discuss, is how a proposed change in size and change in, again, the use is allowed. and change in, again, the use is allowed.
I have no problem with the use. I mean, thirty-eight feet high, does it have to be that friggin' high? About thirty-four feet? I mean.
It's permitted up to forty-five.
Again, the, the neighborhood, it's all two-story houses.
All right.
You know, it's just stuff like that. It's just, it looks, if you go back to the picture, the artist's rendering of it all, it just, with the rest of the neighborhood, it just seems a wee out of place. I mean, right now, it's this nice little colonial building. It fits in there nice. It blends with the hood.
Keep going down.
You know, and you know, yeah. Now we've got Butcher Boy on Salem Street.
It's, it's only one story, right?
Correct.
Okay. So are you going higher because of the big light in?
Or the atmosphere or the interior of the market?
Okay.
Yeah, anyway, those are my concerns. Like I said, the rest of the neighbors, we've got nowhere to go here. We just want to have a formidable and, you know, neighborhoodly solutions we can get.
I think that, that traffic, noise, lighting, hours, those are all.
Hours are a big thing because it's nice and quiet there now.
So what we'll do is, thank you, so what we'll do is, I think we'll probably, we'll continue this to the next hearing date, which will be July ninth. And if we could get definitely some more specifics on those issues, and I definitely encourage you to speak with these guys about especially those issues, and then continue with the peer review and get all our, try to continue getting all the things lined up. But, you know, if we could have some more specifics about how we think traffic's going to look. You know, if anything you guys can think of about the parking situation, more specifics on the hours that you're suggesting, if they're going to change, if they're going to stay the same, things like that, those would all be helpful. Okay, great, so.
I, I do think that, you know, when you look at this, people, one of the things I want to thank you all, I think you're very, sort of, everyone's very, very reasonable, very specific, which helps us a lot in understanding how to balance all the equities here. But I do think, and you have to speak with us, this is the same thing we talk about, is that we can't figure out every single thing. We almost have to come out with something and then say, let's look at it again in a year and make sure it work, it works right. And maybe we do that for two or three years and iron out the problems, so.
Okay, great. Continue till July ninth. Okay, what else we got? The executive session. Sure. Uncontinued.
Michelle Nicolai, so I live on twenty-five Abbott Street. I share all the concerns with my neighbors. One question is, especially with the restaurant being down on that side, on the side of the building, like we look at it from our property, it's going to be on the right side. Is there going to be public doorways from, exit from the restaurant on that side, or is the public supposed to come in and out just from the front side of the building? Because our, our property is right behind that parking lot. And that's a concern for if this, you know, the restaurant's going to stay open later. And my other concern is delivery hours. Expanding their business, more deliveries. And right now, they're delivering in the middle of the night, which is, you know, a nuisance. And I don't think we need more noise from that.
So hours we'll talk about, we'll get.
But I'm talking about specifically for delivery, not, not business hours. I want to know when they're going to be, you know, can take deliveries without waking us up in the middle of the night.
Okay, so, and again, we'll, we'll get answers to that, but the question will be more in regards to any changes to the, so we'll find out what they are now and if they're proposing any changes. Entryways, is this just what's depicted?
Yeah, the, this site is intended to have two full access curb cuts. And that will dovetail into the fact that we've increased the site circulation or improved the site circulation around the parcel. So the, the drive aisles are wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic, as is the, as is the curb cut. So I think restricting access during certain times onsite or closing a curb cut will prove to be a logistical hurdle as well as an enforcement hurdle as well.
Oh, you're talking about the site or the building?
The building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Too many, too many people talking. So I think the question was entry, actual, like the doorways into the building.
Okay, misunderstood, sorry.
It's okay. Just doorways in the front, or they're going to be doorways on the sides or the back?
Just the front.
Okay.
I think this problem, sorry, we are for employees.
Right, the public entrance. Public entrance in the front.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great. Now we're continued until July ninth. All right. I think all we have left is the executive session. Is that right? Okay. All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn pending the end of the, or at the conclusion of the executive session.
Okay. Give me a second. Motion to adjourn after executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, can we get a motion to enter into executive session?
Second?
All right, and, hold on, yeah, yeah, yeah. And the reason we're going into executive session is because the chair has determined that an open session would have detrimental effect on the board's litigation position. And we're proposing to go into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with town, litigation strategy in the matter of Severio versus North Andover Planning Board, which has to do with the recreation complex. And the board will not reconvene in open session. We will be adjourned after that. So a motion to enter executive session?
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Aye, just, I'm just vote to go into executive session.
Aye, I'm impressed and vote to go into executive session.
I vote to go into executive session.
I, Larry Crane, vote to go into executive session.
All right, we're executive sessioning.